Thank you, everyone, for attending today. And before we get started into today's business, can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Dr. Lockard, fiscal year budget update.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. We have a sort of a collaborative agenda here this afternoon, and one of the items is to provide an update where we are in the 2023 budget process, any changes from the last time I was before you at the agency hearing, as well as another request for our planned use of revenue as it relates to the state funding. So John's going to walk us back through some of the slides to cover that information.
Okay. So we placed in your packet the presentation from the April 13 board meeting, which was the last update that the Board of Ed received on the budget, and I don't really want to walk you through every slide. What I would say is the changes from the agency hearings start on the fifth page or the fifth slide. They're very faintly numbered, but you can also, I guess, just count to the fifth one. The slide is titled Updates to Expenditure Summary. And on that slide is the first, or is the public presentation of where we costed out some of the ongoing costs that we were trying to get a closer number to back in March when we last met, or when Dr. Lockard met with you at the agency hearing. So as part of the blueprint phase-in, even before the blueprint became law, and now continuing under the blueprint now that it is law, we're continuing to phase in pre-K. And so our plans for next year are to continue to expand three more of our elementary school sites from half-day to full-day pre-K, and we've put a more precise budgeting number to that of $450,000. So that's now a known expenditure headed into fiscal '23. And then below that, on that same page, the Board of Ed, and I think at their January meeting or February board meeting, approved a retroactive to January 3 pay increase to the parts of the transportation reimbursable reimbursement formula through which we pay our bus contractors to increase the salary portion for drivers and assistants by 5% retro to January 3. This $500,000 on this page represents the building cost to maintain that going into the next year and add the planned 3% increase onto that amount. And so the next slide or page-
John?
Yes?
Sorry.
Hey.
Pre-K expansion.
Yes.
Kerwin Blueprint, Kerwin doesn't exist anymore, right? Blueprint pushes cooperating with the private daycares. There don't seem to be enough, and parents can't afford them. Are we going to live with this, or are we going to have to expand? What's going to happen?
Yeah, so this is just, so we understand that there's a goal to expand pre-K. What Mr. Kyler is referring to is the ultimate goal under our requirement under the blueprint is over time to expand pre-K to all, or at least to make it available. I guess we can't compel them to sign up, but you have to have available slots for all fourth, and we're still waiting for some clarification on four-year-olds, and we're still waiting on clarification for three-year-olds at a certain benchmark to the federal poverty level. And the ultimate goal, and this is supposed to phase in starting next year, is to have those slots or those seats shared between us and the private sector ultimately on a 50-50 split. It's supposed to begin on a 70-30 split and then graduate up by 5% every year until it's 50-50. We know that we don't have those private slots in Carroll County, and we know that we're not alone, that many other counties are reporting the same thing. We also don't have a lot of guidance. This is a recurring theme. You could apply what I'm about to say to any blueprint item. We don't have a lot of guidance yet from the state on what, you know, specifically our requirements could be. But we do know that at a minimum, it has to be full-day pre-K for whatever the total number of kids turns out to be. And we were already in the process of converting our half-day sites into full-day. This is just the natural extension. I think at the end of this, we'll be down to two or three sites that are still half-day? Four? Five? We'll be down to five sites that are still half-day. So we think, you know, our understanding is that ultimately, we have to turn in a blueprint implementation plan. That got pushed back in this legislative session for us until March. The state's timelines are now in the fall of the year. So we want to be able to demonstrate that we're continuing to make strides. This is the safest, you know, most appropriate way we can come up with to demonstrate good faith efforts towards the goals, even though we know that ultimately, the goals are much, much more extensive than what we're doing here.
Is there state funding for the pre-K students?
There is. There is now, and so that'll be different than it was under the Thornton formula.
And does that carry over to the private sector?
Ultimately, yes. But it's a little more complicated than that, so the private sector providers, business owners, have to be willing to go through the state certification process, which is much more involved than maybe what they've been used to. I think we have one identified site in all of Carroll County that qualifies, and that's not unique from what I'm hearing at blueprint coordinator meetings. There are counties who say they don't have any provider sites who are yet, you know, yet meet the requirements. And there's a big question, and this existed during the Kerwin Commission, there's a big question of will these providers want to go through that process? There's no requirement for them under law that they must do it. And even some of the more, you know, less rural counties are reporting out at these meetings that they have a surprisingly low number of providers that already meet the definition. So I think this is going to be a statewide issue that they're going to have to look at with, you know, with future legislation, because if they don't, then the worst-case scenario would be they make that a public requirement. They'd just say, if it's not there in the private sector, then local school systems across Maryland figure out a way to make this happen. I haven't heard them say that. It'll just be interesting to see where this goes as this thing unravels over the, or that's not the word, unfolds over the next couple of years.
You might have been right.
John, I have a question. The standards are a part of Excel. Is that the right platform that they're using for that?
Is that mic live at the podium? I shall ask Mr. Steve Warnick, who chairs our Early Childhood Blueprint Committee, to come to the microphone.
Okay, because I've been hearing a little bit about that, and those are very stringent, you know, standards, and really, they want quality programs at a certain level and-
Absolutely. So all of the programs, including our own pre-K programs and kindergarten programs, will have to go through Maryland Excels, through the accreditation process. Including our instructional assistants, will have to also have a special certification for pre-K beginning in 2026. So the implementation is over the next, you know, four years from current till 2026, when we have to finalize and make sure that any pre-K site that we have has both a certified teacher, which we currently do, we always do, but the certification for our instructional assistants will be different, as well as all of our sites have to have Maryland Excels accreditation.
And what's the standard that to really have a quality program? I think they make a distinction between just having a program and having a quality-
Correct. There's different levels. I believe it's four or five are quality programs. Don't quote me on that, but there are different levels, and so you must pass to meet that level if you want to receive the state funding for the students.
Yeah, so again, just trying to put that in perspective as, in perspective, as I'm thinking about, you know, the private schools, you're saying we don't have many anyway, so I mean, that's really asking quite a bit to put a quality program-
It is. We have three schools. Our Judy Center schools are accredited currently, and they have gone through the process. The process is actually 18 months, so it's not a process that is quick. It actually takes 18 months from the day that you actually initiate the process. It could be a little bit longer, but the average is 18 months.
I think the, while you're still there, Steve, I think the approach in the first couple of years is there's an assumption that there'll be a state waiver. So for counties who don't have a 70-30 split out of the gate, or who don't have the required number of slots identified, then there's, there will be a waiver process through MSD, I believe?
Yes. What they have shared with us is that there will be a waiver process most likely throughout the, you know, the years, because they aren't seeing the private providers being able to accommodate the needs at this point. As I said, you know, we have one private provider. That may only be, you know, you have to have a ratio basically of a teacher and an assistant to 20 students. So you're only talking 20 students in the entire county that may be able to go to that private provider for pre-K, through that program, once we have to be certified.
And the, was it Commissioner Weaver who asked about state funding to private providers? Whichever of you asked that, the way the blueprint reads is that the per pupil amount for that, for each student enrolled would transfer to that private provider, just like it would to the Board of Ed if it's an enrolled, you know, if we have an enrolled student. So the question that's sort of out there now is, is that amount of money enough to make it, to make it, you know, attractive as a business model to a private provider to go through the accreditation, to get all their folks certified, you know, to do all of those steps for Excel certification to participate?
And it would be a full-day program, so they would have to offer lunch, as well as all the special areas, health, PE, music, art, so they would have to have someone that, you know, is certified or would have, you know, those talents to be able to offer that in the classroom.
My other worry with this, and recently, and I think they talked to you too, Commissioner Weaver, a farm family, on paper, they have plenty of money for this, so they don't qualify. If they do waivers, if the privates don't have it, where do they send their kid? That's my worry with this, too.
Well, that's our worry, too. So if it doesn't materialize in the private sector, do they revisit this in a few years and say, local school systems will make the slots available? There's also a capital implication here. That's not really something we had made part of this discussion, but in the longer term, there's going to have to be a capital cost. One of the bills that passed this year requires the Interagency Commission on School Construction to reconvene its work group and look at sort of the blueprint tie-ins to the state capital construction program. So there'll be some work coming out of the state on that. Tomorrow night at our Board of Ed meeting, so somewhere between 5:00 and 11:30 p.m., there'll be the Educational Facilities Master Plan update.
What time period is that?
Which one of you is going to be there? 10:15.
The one that lost the bet.
I go from 5:00 till 7:00. I believe you have to go, sorry.
So the Educational Facilities Master Plan, which we bring every year as a state requirement, is kind of like the planning document for our facilities. It has enrollment projections and aging, you know, aging condition of schools. For the first time, we're just going to sort of put some very general language as a placeholder for pre-K expansion in there. There's no meat tied to that. We don't have enough details yet, but we're just noting, you know, we know that there's this capital consideration sitting out there as well.
Is anyone from the state or the county reaching out to the private preschools in the area and telling them these are the requirements, if you want to be accredited, and what you have to do, and so forth?
Yes. There's always been a grant through the Early Childhood Program that any school, private provider could, you know, go through the accreditation process, but MSD is specifically reaching out to all the private providers. They also are going to provide us with a list of any private providers that are interested in becoming accredited or who have passed the accreditation process. But they're working on that as we speak.
And are there any church groups involved in that? Any church daycares interested?
That I don't know. We haven't received the list yet. I just know that there is one private provider that has been accredited for several years, so they'll continue their accreditation.
And Susan Krebs mentioned yesterday a concern, and she's active on the daycare side, that would a church daycare get certified if they say grace at lunch? She said, "We're not ready to give up saying grace at lunch just to be part of this program."
Yeah, I understand there's a six-and-a-half-hour period when they cannot acknowledge-
Yes, yes. So there's, it's going to be interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, so, sure. So there's those two items, which we knew were in the works, but we hadn't put a budgetary number to. If you jump forward two slides to the seventh slide, it's titled Update Projected Pension Increase. This is a very unfortunate item that was shared publicly for the first time at the April board meeting. And to make a long story short, the state actuaries have adjusted their assumed rate of growth on the teachers' pension plan, and as you know, since I think fiscal 13, somewhere in there, the phase-in of a 50-50 cost share of the pension system was enacted between state and local. Those actuarial projections change what's called the normal cost for local school systems in the unfortunate way, in the negative way, and so we now know that we anticipate a, between the normal cost and the administrative fee portion, about a $2 million bill that we were really not anticipating and were, in fact, hoping with some valid reason, that this was going to be resolved during the General Assembly with a supplemental budget released from the governor. That did not happen during the General Assembly. The superintendent's organization, to which Dr. Lockard belongs, has written to the governor formally, asking him to consider supplemental budget. To my, to my knowledge, to my understanding, he hasn't responded to that request yet. It's also, it's also my understanding, and I don't, you should have brought Mike Fowler, and I would make him go to the mic, but it's my understanding that the governor's not on a set timeline, so he doesn't have a, he's not confined to just the 90-day legislative period or something like that. He could, he could make a decision later. And so we have to, the Board of Ed ultimately has to figure out, how do they want to handle this? Do they want to handle this with the assumption that maybe some sort of a supplemental budget comes through in the summer, or that there's a legislative remedy prospectively in the next session, which is another way of saying, you know, do they want to make further cuts, if necessary, to pay for this cost? Or do we want to look at using one-time money to address it, hoping that there could be a retroactive or proactive way of addressing it, either this summer or in the next General Assembly? So that's not something you've heard about, including at the agency hearing. That's a, that's a new item. And then, any questions there? Then that brings us to the, to the next slide. I think one of the questions from maybe some of your staff, and perhaps from you, has been, how would you use the revenue that you receive from the state and locally? And I would, if you would, I would consider putting Slide 8 next to, there's some single sheet handouts in your packet. There's one titled CCPS FY '23 Blueprint Funding Amounts by Specific Programs. And one of the questions Roberta had forwarded was sort of like, as I understood it, was sort of like, how much money are you getting in these program areas from the state, and how would you spend it? And perhaps, why do you keep talking about it being restricted or not, that sort of thing? So I went ahead and printed from the state formula, the amounts coming to the Board of Ed in fiscal '23 under the blueprint program areas, and-
If I can stop you for a second?
Sure.
Because, actually, ask that question. It's a specific question. You're getting $10.2 million additional from the state. How is that 10.2? Where is that figure in? That's what I would really like to know. Because I see, I mean, it can't be all of this. So the 10.2 additional, where is that going?
So, and I feel like our friends from the union are sitting over there. So, you know, we're subject to collective bargaining, so there's going to be a limit to what, what we could discuss relative to that. But if you were to look at Slide 8 and look at the amount of money we anticipate from the state, 10.2 million, and the earlier slide, which would, I think, be Page 7, where it shows our known expenditures, including those two updates we talked about, even with pensions still parked to the side, the board, the board isn't going to have enough revenue, likely, and you all stop me if I'm not speaking in a manner you're comfortable with, to get beyond addressing employee compensation. So between the 10.2 million from the state, what you're, what you have even in your proposed budget with the additional $2 million minus that $7.8 million in known expenditures and costs for next year, we're not going to be able to go very far into this list of items except for salary. And so, you know, a concern we have, which we shared, including at the agency hearing, is we have a, I have an increasing level of concern that after the fact, roughly around March of '24, or no, '23, when we turn in our comprehensive implementation plans to the state, they're going to come back to us and say things like, "We gave you this amount of money in this program, and this program, and this program. How did you spend it?" And the answer's going to be on employee compensation, and it's going to be interesting what the outcome of that is, so.
So the $10.2 million is not really as restrictive as I first thought then, of what you're telling me, because you're allowed to use that-
We think.
-different ways that you want to.
So we have asked that question in multiple forums with the state. Dr. Lockard's been at some of those meetings with me. Mr. Burke has asked that question, or his peers have, at state CFO meetings with MSD, and the answer is less than comfortably clear. It's sort of like, it's not going to be restricted like a grant, but it's going to be restricted in terms of reporting and your comprehensive plan analysis. And then we, and we're not the only county by far. I thought the superintendent in one of the southern Maryland counties did a great job of sharing his view at a Pizzam meeting with the state superintendent and the executive director, the AIB. But the answer has never been, the answer has never been definitive. And so we keep saying, I've said it so much, they kind of cringe when I walk into the room. What's going to happen if, for other reasons, what's going to happen if we turn in our plan and you don't like the fact that almost all of this money went to compensation? What is going to be the outcome then? Because the outcome under the law, under the blueprint, is they would withhold 25% of our money for the following, 25% of our new state funding for the following fiscal year. How is that helpful? You know, is that the intent of all of this?
You know, we, we, at least from, the Board of County Commissioners, work hard to be transparent in the budget process, as we have our work groups and we, we share with others now. Some may not believe we're as transparent, but that's okay. I think we are. And we have these conversations. It's just very confusing on what do all these numbers mean, because I'm getting, just like I imagine my colleagues, emails, texts, phone calls from teachers, from parents, from all the, and asking for more money and more of this, and I'm like, I can't come up with a clear answer on what they're now getting, you know, when it comes to compensation. And I think I understand collective bargaining. I'm not a union person, but I just, it's a shame that we have to go through this dance every time when the teachers are going through, you know, I mean, we're at the, you know, bomb of the ninth, working our budget, and now we're getting all these, you know-
I think I can simplify it, and you know me, I tend to break some rules with collective bargaining. If we used every damn penny of that money for employee compensation, is there any way in hell we can give pay increases similar to the counties around us? That, I think that sums it all up.
What do you mean, of every penny of what money? The 10.2?
All of it. Every penny we have right now.
So of the, like, basically $19 million extra that you're going to get this year? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, every penny we've got. You've got to look at, and John May is going to get into this, our total budget is probably 85% to 90% payroll or payroll-related expenses.
Right, right, right.
So if you take the other 12%, you can't cut it in half. You, you know, that's, that's real, so, and I can't say percentages, right, John? But we can't get close to the surrounding counties if we use every possible penny for that.
But I still don't know, yeah, no, I get it. I just still don't know how to answer teachers and parents when they're texting me, except, "Thanks for reaching out. I appreciate it. I'll talk to my colleagues," and, you know, that's it. But there's no, "I agree, and this is the X amount. We want you to provide more of," because I don't know where that money goes.
Well, so-
I don't know if I'm being too simplistic about it.
Oh, and me, too, but- So unless we cut services, and because we're 88% human resource, so that means we'd have to, we'd have to cut, the only way to really get millions of dollars is to, is to cut people, right? And the last thing we want to do, I'm giving you a little segue to my comments this evening at the, last thing we want to do is, is cut, is cut positions, because the blueprint actually is going to call for us to increase that over time.
But in droves, yeah.
So, and then, there's no good things to cut. It's programs and functions for students. It's, there's nothing left. We've done all that over the last 15 years. So when you, when you just do the math, I think, John, we have about almost $7 million in what we know we're going to have to spend more for next year. He just went through that, right?
7.8, yeah.
7.8. So out of the gate, let's just say it's 18 million new dollars, 10 from the state, 8 from you, jumps up surrounding. Out of the gate, it's takeaway 8.
8.
Okay.
Ignore pension if you want to, and say-
There's another 2 million, okay? So now we're down to-
So it leaves 10, roughly.
Down to 10. So look on page 8. Just for a step, it costs 5.2. So if we give all our employees a step, now we're down to 4.8 left over. So the reality is, there's not enough funding. That's the reality. That's the, that's the answer, respectfully, Commissioner Rothstein, is because of the size of our system, because we have over 3,000 employees, because of the requirements that we have to fulfill, because we really don't want to cut positions that are critical for students and their success. In fact, I would say to you, the last four years, I've tried to add positions to support students, just can't do it, because we also need to have compensation for our employees.
Right.
You guys just went through a study and have done that. We don't, we don't want to lose them to other places, and we certainly want to try to attract them here. And so that, that is, that is the challenge. So when we get to the bottom line, the math, the math is what the math is.
So it leaves enough for a step in a small cola relative to what other Boards of Ed you may hear settling at. And then the blueprint has some very specific teacher salary requirements that also have to be addressed, starting kind of now. And so it wouldn't be, you know, again, without stepping too far into bargaining, it's, it can't be a one-size-fits-all approach, at least for, under the blueprint, because there are some very specific teacher salary things there that have to occur. So, you know, if other counties, I think, are publicly settled now at step in seven or step in five, or some not, but, you know, some are, then that's a challenge in the, at the bargaining table.
And to be clear, the collective bargaining is with five separate?
All five this year.
And each one represents a piece of the school system? It doesn't mean that, like, all teachers belong to CCA yet. It means that CCA represents all teachers? Is that a better way of saying it?
Right, yes.
At this time, do we know how many teachers are within CCA? Just curious.
I would, they're sitting back there. I don't know if they want to shout out, but I would estimate 65% to 70% of teachers belong to CCA. I got a thumbs up.
Good thought.
And from the other side of the fence, John, and I talked at one of our agenda meetings, that pension issue where maybe Governor Hogan can do a supplemental budget and he has a surplus, the formula that we're stuck with with the state, we're trying to come up with some talking points on that to get to the delegates to see if they can do anything for us, at least in future years. I'm not sure they can. All we, and you can elaborate a little bit on that, but when you guys ask about why we got X amount of dollars, they say, "It's a formula." That's the answer.
Which is what they said before.
Oh, I know, I know.
For better, for better or worse, they're following the law.
But maybe the law needs to change.
Given our, our situation as a county, we never do well under apparently any formula they come up with relative to others. So one thing, you know, if there's a wild card out there, unexpected student enrollment growth would, would be a wild card to the positive, because for every additional student, there's more funds. And then, you know, sort of where we don't do as well as other systems is amount of growth, but then also, depending on that student, it's even more money. And in places that are much, much more diverse, then there's more money coming to those counties through the state formula, and relative wealth. We tend to, you know, we don't feel wealthy, but when they map out relative wealth of the 24 counties, we remain ninth or 10th somewhere in there, so we don't, we don't do well under that aspect of the formula.
And another concern, if I'm not saying, if I'm not violating all the rules, there are, there are educators in CCA who are at the top step. So if we only give a step, they don't get a penny, maybe.
Yeah.
That's all got to be in negotiations. So when you look at that step, it's easy to do the math and say, you know- So when you look at that step, it's easy to do the math and say, you know, it's, it's tight.
It's, it varies by employee group or union, but for the teachers and the case unit, which are instructional assistants and secretaries in that, that group, those percentages are fairly high for employees who are at the maximum step. So if we only give a step, they, they don't get a salary increase at all.
Say I was caught there for years.
You were caught, yeah. And so that number's something around 16% of teachers, I think, and 14 or 13% of the case unit. The other units are less than that, obviously.
And I think one of the things too is we haven't done any big hiring. You showed that at the agency hearing where, when the school closures occurred, a lot of people were let go. We haven't made up for that. We've put in temporary positions, but we haven't even touched the surface on what we wanted to do based on what Dr. Lockhart heard from the public regarding special education and, and more mental health specialists. We can't even do any of that.
And I think there's some confusion too, with me at least, but quarantine kind of people, tutor kind of people, a lot of that's grants. And right now, if the grant runs out, we can't keep them.
So, yeah, so we added.
And we're not planning to.
We added, so 40 folks, we called quarantine coaches, who were kind of like an instructional assistant that, you understand that. We added those using the federal funding for one year, so they run out at the end of this year. There is a new state grant from MSDE called the Leeds Grant. We, I think we've, we've applied to keep, I think, we, we've applied for funding that would allow us to retain half, half of those quarantine coaches for one more year. And then on page 8, there's a line item called Positions Funded by Federal Funds. The board had actually authorized us to hire up to 50 teaching FTE during the pandemic when we were having, you know, some challenges staffing classrooms. We ended up hiring 26 out of the 50. We've retained them, maintained them for two fiscal years using the SRR3 money. So they're, they don't run out this July, June 30. They would run out June 30 of '23. So we have a, a million six tied to that. It can't happen this year, obviously, but we really would hate to lose them ultimately, because we've gotten them here, we've gotten them inducted, and we know that later, under the blueprint, we have to reduce the amount of time every teacher teaches. So it would seem a shame to release 26 positions, because it would necessarily be these human beings. Another year from now, only to begin a process of hiring more teachers, starting in fiscal '25 to the end of the blueprint. So there's a lot of things coming together here under the blueprint that, they're going to be challenging for us in Carroll.
I might add, I don't think any of us have fully gotten our heads around the long-term impact upon the mental health of our children post-COVID and how much of a drag that's putting on us and the fiscal impact it's going to have on all of this. And after all, our children are the central focus, and their mental health is paramount for them to have a good education. So I'm curious, long-term, how we analyze that and what we can do to address that and ultimately then impacts the bottom line, because that's an increase in resources that we don't even have.
The, you know, the immediate answer, at least relative to the budget presentation on that same page, priority positions funded by fund balance. A few of those were for student health and substance abuse. And then the school-based priorities from town hall meetings, which were, were they now, Steve? Two fiscals, two fiscal years ago, much, well, I think pretty much all of that 3.1 million in identified priorities was either special ed or mental health-related guidance counselors, behavior therapists, school psychologists.
I know it's very much on your radar screen, more so than anyone else. But it's important for the public to realize that you are addressing it. We just need more resources and diagnose exactly what needs to be done with it.
Yeah, and while we're bashing the blueprint, another, another serious concern I have, and I don't know if Nick is here, if you, if you don't have a comment, it's okay. Nick Shockner, Director, Special Ed Chairs, our Blueprint Subcommittee. The policy area under Kerwin is called ensuring more resources for more students, I think, or something close to that. We, we're, so given our demographic as a county, other than special ed and LEP, which would be ESAR, Limited English Proficient Students, we're not going to see any money under the blueprint. So the major ways in which money is coming under the blueprint to address that policy area beyond special ed is through concentration of poverty grants, if you've heard that term, as Mike's updated you throughout, or community school funding. And we, we are, it's sort of like when the state started phasing an early childhood under O'Malley, we're going to be like the last county to ever qualify for those pockets of money. So we're not going to see any, I'm confident, sitting here, I'll retire long before Carroll County receives concentration of poverty money or community school funds. But I have my suspicions that if we were to turn in a comprehensive implementation plan under the blueprint and give it to them in March and say, hey, we're not doing anything in those areas because we're not getting any state money, they're going to send it back with some notes saying, yeah, yeah, you are going to do something, and you're the other funding source.
Mr. O'Neal, I'm curious to see what the breakdown is per state jurisdiction on how much state funding goes per pupil in each jurisdiction.
We can get that.
Well, I know, one thing is they were concentrating on areas that had schools that were low performing. Carroll County does not have any low-performing schools.
I understand that, but the bottom line is, I'd like to, if Carroll County gets $5,000 per student, I'd like to know that. If Baltimore City gets $10,000 per student from the state of Maryland, I'd like to see that. And I truly believe that there's a legitimate case for a lawsuit against the state of Maryland for discriminating the students of our jurisdiction. I don't think there's any reason why a student of Carroll County should be discriminated against over a student in another jurisdiction. Our students have just as much right to the state revenue as any other child in the state of Maryland. After all, we pay a lot of state taxes. And I don't think it's fair how they redistribute the money. And ultimately, I think the solution to our problem has to be in some sort of litigation. This has to stop. Because no matter what we're doing, we're not keep going into a hole. Because the citizens of Carroll County perpetually get penalized for being good parents, raising their kids properly, making sure they go to school, being responsible parents. We get penalized for it, where other jurisdictions.
Maintaining budgets.
What's that?
Maintaining budgets. You want all the stuff you guys do and we do, we get punished.
It's counterproductive to be a good county, and it has to stop. And unless we address that, we're not keep spiraling down this hole.
I think we talked about that the last board meeting, that since we don't have any low, low-performing schools in Carroll County, like, we're not getting any extra money for that. Like, we're not getting like, good job, okay, well, now let's reimburse your teachers a little bit more, because they've, they've done this, they've done this great job for our kids. Instead, no, we get punished because we are doing a good job.
I don't pay my worst employees the highest salary. And that's kind of what's taking place with the student funding. The worst schools are getting the most funding, which perpetuates worse schools to get more funding.
And we don't have ghost students either. Every student's accounted for in Carroll County.
One of the difficulties is the fact that the type of funding litigation that you mentioned has already been tried. And the Court of Appeals in the case of Somerset County versus Hornbeck said that there is no equal protection right under the federal constitution or under the Maryland constitution for an equalization of spending above the state funding formula. So really, if you're talking about inequities in funding from county to county, the way to address that is legislatively rather than judicially.
And there's three of you, I believe, who could potentially do that.
The, the first part is easy to get. I'm, I'm confident I saw DLS produce per pupil amounts recently, so I'll dig those up and send them over so you can see the breakdown.
I'd like to see the litigation on that. I'd like to see the approach on how they entered into that, because there's always different avenues for litigation on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think the second, I guess, third agenda item is state capital funding updates.
Yes, so good news, I think, I guess. Back at the time that we were talking together about locally funding and planning career in tech and East Middle at the same time, we, we all spent a lot of time saying and thinking, well, if we do that, it stands to reason logically that that would probably back off all of our other capital projects for a while, because the state would be, the state would not be forthcoming with additional funds to participate in other smaller projects like system renovations, systems renovations and that sort of thing. And the opposite is turning out to be true. The, the state seems to be replete with cash and has set records for its, for its capital program for this coming year. So back in, somewhere in the middle of the current fiscal year, the state approached us and said that they would be willing to release funding to us under some of the programs that previously we hadn't qualified for any projects, notably the Healthy School Facility Fund. And they, they were willing to issue their, their portion of funding for two system projects, Spring Garden HVAC and Westminster Roof, Window Replacement? Windows Replacements. Both of those are projects that you had already committed funding to under your plan. And so those could then almost immediately move forward with, with planning and design and eventual construction. And then late in the, this fiscal year, near the end of session, the, the folks from the IAC came back to our folks and said, you know, you really ought to apply for a couple more of your systems projects under the, under the Healthy Schools Fund, because we think there's a really good chance we would, we would give you those funds now as well. And so I know that Mr. Prokop and his team have talked to Mr. Zaleski and his team about those two projects. It would be the North Carroll Middle School Roof Replacement and the Oklahoma Road HVAC, Oklahoma Road Middle HVAC Projects. And so I'm sure that, you know, Ted and his team will be having some conversations about considering moving those, I think they're in your six-year window, but moving them within the window to match the state funding so that they could move forward on a much sooner-than-anticipated timeline. And it's starting to get to the point where we don't have the human resources to manage all of the projects that are suddenly becoming available to us. So good news with its own catch, you know, but, but the state, the state's moving construction forward very, very aggressively. That's all I got on that.
Any questions, sir? John, a little bit of good news, we don't know what to do with it.
Mr. O'Neal, you're a wet blanket.
Does this move you up several years in your project? How many, how far along?
Do, do either of you remember where those projects were?
Next year. So we shifted one.
So we're just shifting them up one year, and we would have shifted Spring, well, Spring Garden was already in your plan, so I guess it didn't shift. It was just on hold, waiting for state funding, so, yeah. So.
Yep, Southern Area Redistricting Committee. Now, this is already put out on our board docs for tomorrow's evening, tomorrow evening's meeting. So this is a little sneak peek of what the board will have a fuller discussion on tomorrow.
I thought you were going to say we wouldn't have to go over it tomorrow night.
So you have the full presentation, which, which is on our, on the board's agenda of the, of the board's website. And if you wish to watch this, feel free to tune in tomorrow on TV or streaming or YouTube. I don't intend to present this, other than to say, the board reformed a Southern Area Redistricting Committee. I think they approved Dr. Lockhart to move forward in December, and we, and Dr. Lockhart formed a committee in January, and the committee began a meeting, began meeting almost immediately in January. Has, some of those folks were, I think a handful of those people were on the Freedom Elementary Redistricting Committee, which got delayed and then postponed due to the pandemic. Some are new. County staff members are, are back for that committee as well. Linda was there the first time. I think Clay was still there on the first one, so it's Laura now. Yeah. And so the, the committee delved right in, kind of got the, you know, the necessary level of background and understanding policies, procedures, research concepts out of the way, and are at the point where they are already working on some drafts of plans to eventually come to the Board of Ed on its prescribed timeline under its redistricting policy or boundary adjustment policy. And we felt like the work is far enough along that, that this month would be a good time to pause and come forward and sort of publicly present to the Board of Ed, here's where the committee is, here's some of the things that it's looking at, here's some of the things that, you know, that have come to the forefront in terms of that analysis that maybe we at least want to share with you or have some dialogue with you on. And the timeline hasn't changed, so the committee under the board's policy still must bring a report forward in September of a year, so that would be September of '22. There's a period of public comment and public hearings that are required before the superintendent would make a recommendation to the board for a final plan for action, and the board would vote on that plan or whatever plan it wishes to in November of a year. So November of '23, in this case. And the earliest that any, the earliest that any changes could be made would be the, the subsequent school year. So no, you know, nobody's student would be moving, even if a plan is enacted until the subsequent school year. So, you know, that's, that's where we, that's where the committee is. I, I would say that, you know, we paused for the pandemic, and the enrollments are coming back countywide. The, the enrollments in the South really were less affected in the sense that, you know, when we took another look at bringing a recommendation back to the Board of Ed to start this process again, we realized there's a need to probably look beyond just elementary schools, but to also look at secondary schools, and that, that truly is bearing out at the middle school level in the southern, southern part of the county. And so there's a lot of things to, to consider and discuss there. I'll stop there and see if you have questions or.
If you're addressing Mechanicsville in here, Mechanicsville fills in, or feeds into what?
West Middle.
So Westminster.
All of it, the West Middle?
So, yeah, into West Middle, but you're not addressing West Middle in the middle and high school. So it needs to be looked at if you're addressing Mechanicsville.
So, so far, the committee has sort of set two goals for itself, and they're, both goals are based on the board's policy for adequate facilities. So the first goal would adjust, why don't one or both of you go to the podium? So that if I misstep, you're there already. The first goal would, would address making sure that all schools fall within what's defined as approaching inadequate under the board's policy. And that's less, you know, that's less impact. Fewer students, fewer moves. You know, the devil's always in the details, so anytime you start to look at changing boundaries, then you get into lots of other questions, all of which fall under the board's policy, but none of which fall neatly into a row. And one thing can be in one person's mind weighted much more than it would be in another person's mind. So things like feeder patterns, which is what you're getting to, ride times on buses, you know, those sorts of things all suddenly pop up, and they don't always mesh well. And so the committee's trying to, trying to work through all that. The second goal of the committee is to get all schools to 100% of utilization, to at least 100% of utilization. And when you do that, and particularly in light of where the capacities of the middle schools sit, it, it didn't take very long before they moved into what some people might consider no longer to be the Southern area. So not just Mechanicsville, but also Robert Moten Elementary and West Middle. And is, is that the extent? Mike Hardisty is on the podium.
The middle schools, of course, feed into the high schools, so high schools are part of this conversation as well.
And can you address specifically to Commissioner Rothstein's question, is West Middle part of the Goal 2 analysis but not Goal 1?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, what's happening in the Southern, especially, especially in the southwestern part of the county, is some significant residential growth. I mean, that's just the fact, especially with two very large parcels that are coming onboard, plus other areas that are now being filled, like the townhomes and stuff like that down Sykesville. So Piney Elementary and Freedom Elementary in Lyton Springs are really a lot of focus on how that's really growing and feeding into Sykesville Middle and then to Century. You know, but it's kind of like this balloon effect. When you start working on that, it's just going to start increasing in another area. That's why we started looking at the same, okay, we shouldn't really look at South, southern part of county. We should look at the county and how this now affects. Because if now we're addressing Mechanicsville and thinking that Freedom, which is at 120%, is going to now go into Mechanicsville, then it's going to feed up into Westminster. And eventually, there's going to be growth up there. So we got to just ensure that, you know, the expectations on where the growth is going to be and that the schools will remain adequate as far as their, you know, the capacities. Everybody I talk to loves Freedom Elementary School, regardless of how overpacked it is. They love Freedom. And in fact, all of them, Piney, Lynn, you know, they just have this sense. But it's getting to a point where it's just busted at the seams. But it's getting to a point where it's just busted at the seams. And we have residential growth that feeds right into Freedom. So, and if it doesn't go to Freedom, it's going to go up to Mechanicsville. If it goes up to Mechanicsville, then it's going to go into Westminster. That's my concern, you know.
And I think you're right. Nobody wants to leave those high-performing schools. And that's going to be an issue. And don't throw anything. A couple of these things, they're going to affect a third of our schools, 17, 18 schools maybe. Thinking outside the box, what do you guys think of a couple $10 million expansions to individual schools instead of moving kids?
Expansions to our new schools.
Expansions.
Expansions, I think. I think that would be feasible.
Additions.
Additions. Yeah, additions. Because technically, we have enough schools, but some of them aren't big enough. And I don't raise air. What's an addition to a school? 10 million? Am I okay?
Throw it out there.
You're in construction. You tell us.
Not as much as he is in schools. But again, I think, thinking outside the box, is that a possibility?
Would you get state funding if you have capacity throughout the county?
Who knows?
Do we have a prayer for state funding?
It's an interesting question on multiple levels because there's, there's a thought process that, you know, I love Freedom, or I love Linton, or I love wherever. But there might also be a more global, I belong in the southern area of the county, and suddenly I wake up and find myself at West Middle. How does this happen? And Westminster High. So at the middle school level, that would almost require an addition outright. There's not, there's no way around that. But at the elementary level, if you're looking a few years down the road with mandated pre-K expansion and capital design attached to that, if you're adding on, and this is just me talking out loud, you know, don't write these things down and remember them as meaning anything.
You're being televised. Okay? Please don't write anything down.
But if we're, you know, if, just like with full-day kindergarten, if, you know, most of us remember that. So if you're going to add two classrooms at every school eventually, is it cost-effective to add four to have people remain where they believe they naturally remain, keep feeder patterns cleaner, you know, keep ride times shorter? There's all of those factors that always go into all of these things. And now, you know, there's also this thought, I don't know that there's anyone in Maryland in public ed who doesn't believe they're going to be building pre-K additions in the near future. So does it make sense to consider those two classrooms and one or two more, depending on which schools that aligns with, to kind of keep those feeders in the same place?
Well, the problem I see with that, you're going to add more classrooms to existing buildings, which not increasing the size of the media center, you're not increasing the size of the cafeteria, you're not increasing the size of the gym, you're not increasing the size of the hallways, all those that all those students use. So it runs into a problem. The school isn't as adequate, I guess I would say, as it was before those new additions got, you know, were put on. And I also have to bring this up. There was a study done, I don't know, a decade ago, in schools of Washington DC, which at the time were the worst performing schools in the country. And they went and they asked parents, what do you think of your child's school? It's great. It's fantastic. Best school I've ever seen in my life. Because everyone wants to, number one, believe that their child is getting a great education. And even at those terrible performing schools, they're not leaving them. They want to stay where they are. So it doesn't make, I mean, it was mentioned that there are high-performing schools. Really doesn't make any difference. They want to stay where they are. And I'm not saying that it's a bad thing, but the way, I just don't think expanding the school, because you're not looking at all the other factors involved in expansion of more students in that same-sized building, basically.
Plus, again, as you're saying, you know, you're looking at the facility needs, but then there would be a lot of human needs as well. I mean, additional staff members.
Oh, yeah.
Even school administrators, you would have to increase in some instances. Well, I mean, you'd have to look at all of that.
Right. What's the cost to add four classrooms to this elementary school?
What's the capital project? You'd have to build...
What's the state average square footage cost right now? Do you remember?
Yeah, we're, it's close to 600, I think. That's what we're seeing in terms of actual bids.
Wow.
Now, but if you're trying to throw a number at a classroom, it's, it becomes difficult. There's a, there's a, there's a level of efficiency, the more you add. You know, you could throw a number like a million bucks at an 850-square-foot classroom. It becomes difficult, though. You have to do studies of the schools and how they operate to understand what you're going to put on at each, at any particular school, and what you're trying to, you know, what you're trying to add and what you might need to address that's already a problem within the school as it exists. That's why we have to do feasibility studies. But it's hard to just throw a number at it because there may be efficiencies that we can gain by doing a larger addition at school A, no addition at school B, for instance. And there could be efficiencies there. So it's tough to just throw a number out and have any sense of accuracy at this stage.
Were some of our schools designed to allow for an addition? I know North Carroll was. Were some of the other schools designed to allow for an addition or not really?
Not explicitly, as far as I know.
I mean, isn't that why we have these semi-permanent trailers that are out there? You know?
Yes.
Because they're not designed. You know, it's interesting because I also get conversations about moratoriums and growth, residential and commercial. And you don't need a moratorium if we don't have the ability to service that community they can't build. So the moratoriums in place, I virtue that the schools don't have the bandwidth, the capacity, yeah, thanks to bringing those kids.
I also don't want us to get into things that happened decades ago as far as, okay, let's build a development and oh, we got to put a new school in. I don't want us to get into that situation. I don't think that's ever a solution because it's not always going to be that way. I think, you know, I mean, I'm part of what happens when you redistrict. And it can be difficult, and it can be hard, and it's not a favorable thing to look at. But we can look no further than, you know, right up in Hanover. Every couple of years, they do it. It's, sorry, but this is how it is up here. You moved up here knowing redistricting does take place. And I think it's something we are going to have to take a very big pill to swallow. That redistricting does need to be done every so often, and it needs to be in specific areas. I mean, we need to look at those specific areas. Running needs getting ready to be over capacity. You know, we need, we're going to have to look at the Tawney Town area. We're going to have to look at each individual area again. It's been six years, you know? But I mean, it's something we have to do every couple of years to make sure we can make room for new people to move into the county.
And the good news is, and I'm being sincere, is while it's not always easy, there's a great bit of public process and due process built into the redistricting, you know, process. So there's mandatory hearings that, and they're built into our policy as well. So I think Ed is, redistricting is one of the things that if people appeal, it goes right to an evidentiary hearing as well. So there's...
Yeah, so they get due process here within the county, but then they have a state-level evidentiary process as well. And we've been through that.
So it'll be quite a vibrant fall here in Carroll County in this room.
And it can motivate people to get on the Board of Education.
Or at least to come to the meetings.
Yeah.
Meetings are long enough, John.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions on that? And we'll get into that, like I said, tomorrow night on the agenda. Okay. And finally, I think Commissioner Frazier, you had requested adding number five to the Board's Family Life Advisory Committee.
The reason I requested this is I've gotten a few phone calls, texts and so forth on my own email. And I was actually out the other night and two people came up to me and talked to me, hopefully for a short time, but it lasted like 45 minutes, about this committee and what, and what they perceived as going on here. So I asked for, you know, to get some information, and I have. And I just, if the information I have is correct, and you guys can let me know. And I actually gave Mr. Kyler heads up on this, so he'd have all the information at his fingertips tonight, or today, so he could answer these questions. My understanding is that there was, I don't have it in front of me, a couple hundred applications of people that applied for this committee. And I went online, because I got the link, and went through the application process. You guys didn't select me. No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, I went through the application process. The way I looked at that, you had to be a student or a guardian to get on the committee because you couldn't get to the next question unless you clicked one of those two things. Is everybody on this committee a student or guardian? Well, it said guardian on the thing.
Parent or guardian.
Well, yeah, okay. It's right, parent. Okay.
I believe it's parent, guardian, or a member of the community.
But that's not what it said on the application is what I'm getting at. It's not what it said there, and you couldn't get to the next part. So are there people on here who are not parents or guardians? If they are, how did they get their application in? Because you can't go to the next question on that one. And that's the first question I have.
So you're saying the application was automated?
Yeah, you click on parent, or you pick guardian, or whatever it was. And then at the bottom, you could click next. But you can't click next and get to the next question unless you answered that question. So are there people on this committee that are not parents or guardians? If there are, how did they get on?
I don't know that I remember completely. We, we had a Google site, a some kind of site, that showed us all the applicants. And I didn't do the application or look at it, but I know they were on that list. And I don't know for sure that there's anybody on the committee that's not a parent, but I think it's possible.
Right. So I'm just looking at the board's approved Family Life Advisory Committee guidelines, which came in front of the board in September as that was finalized. So to your question, Commissioner Frazier, there are 20 members who are parents slash guardians. There's another section of the, of the membership that is five appointed members, one by each board member. So that may be where you have somebody who's appointed who is not a parent. And then we also have, you know, we have representative from the Health Department, one representative who's a sexual risk avoidance certified.
Right, right. I got all that.
Those folks might not be...
So the five at-large members that were appointed by the school board members, how did they put an application in?
No, I don't think they did.
So how did you know who to appoint?
The appointed ones didn't have to. They, I think it was just a general, wasn't it? It was just someone who had, like, reached out to us or was within the community that had done stuff with the school system.
From what I recall, I was thinking that, again, we just had a listing of all of the names. And I think we had it broken down by levels as well, so we could see whether they had children at, you know, elementary, middle, or high.
Right, that's on, that's on the application.
Right. And I think that's what we were able to see.
Right. If you're a parent or guardian, where does your child go to school? What grade are they in? And all that's on the application. But that's about all that's on there, except for your email address and then any additional comments. So if this, and another question, since we're going there, if that's all that's on the application, well, is this a committee representative of the entire geographical area of Carroll County?
Way more than it used to be.
Say it again?
Way more than it used to be.
So...
Yes, we corrected a problem.
Okay. So you looked at all these applications after you...
I did.
That's what I'm saying. You looked at all, you said, okay, we're looking at covering the whole area. And we're also looking at all the elementary, middle, and high schools.
Yes.
It's all fairly representative.
We specifically talked about, and I can't remember now, one from elementary, one from middle, and two from high schools.
Okay, I just, trying to get it all, trying to get it all out there.
Yeah.
Okay, then my, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I was going to say, from what I recall as well, for each name and level, we saw a reason why they would be interested in serving on the committee.
Right, yes.
So I think we were able to use that information as well.
Okay. Well, then, there were 200, and my last question, maybe, 248 applications. Of that, less than 8% of the applications were from two particular groups. How did they get 60% of the people on the committees? If this is random, I mean, we've all taken, I would think, educational research and statistics classes. That's impossible. How'd they get on the committees?
I've no idea. And I've no idea who's in different, we hear the same stuff with our public comments, that I listen to a certain group.
I'm not saying anybody listens to anybody, but that's impossible to happen that way, unless it was steered somehow.
Evidently, it's not impossible.
It is.
It happened.
Commissioner Frazier, I will let you know, when we get applications for different committees, whether, whatever parent, whether it's CAC, whether it's, you know, Family Life, or whatever committee we have for parents, even the South District, you know, we get a list of names of parents. We don't sit there and look and see what social media accounts these parents have.
What groups were they in?
Where they work, or anything like that.
I have no idea what groups they'd been in.
It's simple of looking, going, okay, this parent has this many kids in elementary, and this is that parent, this, this parent has and lives in this area, and this has this many kids in high school. That's what was the simple application process. It wasn't, I'm sorry, I don't have time to sit and look on social media 24/7 to see what people are or are not in a group of.
But what groups were they in? What groups were 60% in? I have no idea.
Two conservative groups.
Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner Frazier, but don't we live in a majority conservative county?
Membership listed a group?
I do not.
Yeah, me neither.
But don't we live in a majority conservative county?
I'm just trying to, this committee is supposed to be representing the entire Carroll County.
I'm asking a logistical question.
Let me finish. I'm trying to answer your question, if you'll give me a chance. Trying to make sure that the committee actually represents the entire of Carroll County. And yes, Carroll County is a conservative county, no doubt about that. But statistically speaking, it's, like I just said, there were, all right, one group, I can, if I can make out, it's Mothers for Liberty, I think it is. And the other group, I don't see it on here, but it's like Concerned Parents or something. And that might be the wrong name. Don't jump, I'm not sure. Could be Concerned Parents or something like that.
I have no idea.
So we're discussing two social media groups.
What I'm saying is, what I'm trying to say here, if you let me, Tara, I appreciate it, is that only 8% of the applications came from those two groups. Only 8%. How'd they get 60% of the people on this committee? That's what I'm asking, because that doesn't make sense.
Maybe they're more intelligent and they filled out their applications better. I mean, I have no idea. No, I'm serious. I have no idea who's in the group. I take offense to you questioning that it's not diverse.
I didn't say it was.
The committee's done. It's diverse. It's over. Thank you very much for your concerns. If somebody wants to whine because they didn't get on it, let them frickin' whine.
As far as I know, the people that have talked to me didn't apply to get on the groups. I'm just concerned about how this committee was formed. That's all. I'm just trying to get it out there so everyone knows what's going on. That's it. I'm not trying to argue back and forth about it. I'm asking questions.
But the process in the email said what the process was. It's over.
No, it's legitimate as far as whoever's complaining is sitting and looking on social media to see what names are associated with whatever. I get the exact same accusation all the time. What, just because I like Brad Paisley, I'm not allowed to like Aerosmith at the same time? I mean, we're talking social media groups where people have different interests and follow different pages all the time. It doesn't matter if you may or may not agree with that social media group. But to associate a person's name and immediately tie them to something, that doesn't mean anything. It's social media. It's not reality. And the reality is, the applications were looked at and everyone picked a person that they choose. I don't have time to sit and look and see who likes what on social media. I have other things to do like this.
I'm not saying anyone, I don't know why I keep bringing that up. I'm not saying anyone...
Because they're social media groups.
What I'm saying is, I've been contacted by people on, by phone, people emailed me, and people talked to me out in public. That's how I got all this. I don't, I haven't, I'll be honest with you, I've never looked on either one of these, I guess they're websites, websites for either one of these groups. websites for either one of these groups. I have no idea who's on them, and I'm not going to investigate and try to find out. It's not that important. I just...
Okay. So you're telling me you didn't look and investigate, but you're bringing that figure to the board? Those two groups are, have a very high population on social media.
Okay.
That's the, that's the truth.
How do you, just a question for you then. How do you investigate if it's a closed group unless you join it? How do you find out who's on it?
Anybody can join any group. So this means that someone can, looked up a group, had the time, and did a...
I think, I personally think, if the two of you want to beat this to death tonight, go for it. I'm, I think, it's been ask and answer.
All right. I just...
The committee's formed. And I don't know who said the 60%. I don't know what fact they based it on. I have no idea.
I have to say, I've got definitely more than one source, is all I can tell you.
Oh, I believe it. And, well, I'll stop.
Okay.
I'll stop. Any other topics?
I want to remind everyone how beautiful it is outside today, and I feel truly blessed.
Thank you. Any other topic? Do we need a motion to adjourn, or we just say it's over?
I think you motion to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.